Welcome to a second meeting Tuesday, April 16, 2019, at the H. Bernard Monahan Memorial Room. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Jim, can you do the honors?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that, Mr. Chairman.
Good evening and welcome. Please be advised that this open meeting is being broadcast live and recorded by WRPS for playback on Comcast Channel 14 and Verizon Channel 31. It will also be available for online video on-demand viewing at wrpsrockland.com within 24 hours of its conclusion, as are other recently recorded meetings and community events. Please go to wrpsrockland.com for further information. So first on the agenda, we just reconvened from executive session into open session. In there for the purposes of negotiating contract for non-union personnel, that non-union personnel is Elizabeth Zaleski, and I would take a motion to approve the town accountant employment contract for Elizabeth Zaleski, subject to the completion of her background check.
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion, or I have a second?
Second.
A second, all those in favor? That's a vote.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you, Elizabeth.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Okay, community announcements. Jim is the shoe.
I thought, yeah.
Okay, take your mic, okay.
I just wanted to remind people that this coming Saturday, the 20th, at 10 o'clock, is the town's, oh, like, annual cleanup day. We'll be working, like, right along here on Union Street and the rail trail.
Judy, ready? She can go on now.
And we're hosting it in partnership with the Open Space Committee, the Park and Highway Departments, and Home Depot has graciously agreed to sponsor everything again. So we've heard some great interest so far from another, from a number of residents in community groups, and I just, again, hope people will come out at 10 o'clock this coming Saturday, the 20th, for our cleanup day, so we can all clean up the sidewalks, clean up the rail trail, and, you know, really kick this spring off with everyone taking pride in Uptown and the rail trail. So look forward to seeing everyone there.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mullin. Next on the agenda is the enhanced billing system. Noticing tax collector Judy Hartigan just walked in. Judy, come on up.
I know. I think we're a little early. This is just kind of a follow-up on what I presented about a month ago, which in your packets, we have the new advanced billing that we're moving forward with very rapidly. We, Gino and I, have completed all of the testing. The compatibility with Munis is very solid. The real-time processing is incredible. We no longer have to download bills when they go to demand. That's automatic now. Your bill will stay out there until you actually force an expiration date on that bill. When, the necessity for an expiration date is for two things. For motor vehicle, it's if your bill has now gone to the deputy collector and is no longer payable with the town, or if your real estate bill has gone to tax title. That becomes expired, you're no longer to pay, no longer allowed to pay it on time, online. One of the things I want to correct, this is their marketing, their first blush at marketing, so I want to tell you, I want to explain to you that it's not a utility bill, it's going to say tax bill, when it goes into the buck slips of the peoples, of everyone's tax bills in June. A buck slip is exactly what you see in your second page. Buck slip is simply an insert that just guides you through exactly what's happening with your new online bill processing system. That will be in everyone's, all 6,158 real estate bills when they go out in June, which we're coordinating with Invoice Cloud's marketing to make sure that everything that you see here will work out, which is, we've had a lot, we would love feedback from you guys, if anything else you want to add. I've had my staff look at it, a number of other people, to say, you know, a multiple set of eyes is always best. This will be our first introduction to people. We're also going to, this presentation is also part of this whole process. The nice thing about this new improved bill processing is the convenience that people have been looking for, and that a lot, a lot of the feedback we get is that, well, my bill is down, my bill is gone after the due date, and I can't pay it. And that was because the old system was not integrated with Munis, and it did not pick up the percentage daily. What happens now, which I described earlier in my past presentation, is that they are now interfaced in real time. So when the 12 percent interest hits your bill, 12 percent interest hits Invoice Cloud. So your bill is now a real-time bill, giving us the capability of keeping the online billing out there as long as we want. The other piece of this, which marketing has done a fairly nice job with, is we're going to have voice response. So you're now going to be able to pay by phone. You're now going to be able to text and get a repeat text back, reminding me that you have a bill out there. You are now introduced to auto pay. You can now set a post date to say, pay my real estate bill on 5/1, pay my real estate bill, pay my excise tax bill when it's due, or whenever you choose to do that, and that will be a reoccurring thing until you turn it off. So it's much like, what we're trying to do basically is kind of guide people away from bill pay. Bill pay is a very, a very utilized system in that people use their own banks to process their bills. The downside with bill pay is that, what a lot of people don't realize, is that they think the ACH comes out and we get an electronic transaction the next day. With bill pay, a physical check is cut from the bank. So you may see the debit come off your statement, on your banking statement, we may not see that check for seven days. So there's a lag time that is really, yeah, it is a wow factor, because sometimes, if you're at the cusp of the due date, and you think you're paying on time, the reverse may be happening. We're not getting it for seven days, and so now interest is accruing. This affords us the capability of allowing people to kind of migrate away from that bill pay, and now start to use your phones and your electronic devices, telephone. There is one, we, I am working with them because the, I've been testing the IVR response, and it gives you the option of Spanish or English. I've asked the question if we could introduce Portuguese. We have a large Brazilian population, and I think it would behoove us to maybe not negate the Spanish, but offer Portuguese as well. So they're looking at that, it's the first time they've ever been asked the question. They don't think that it's going to be a big issue, but again, it's been part of the arduous process of us testing a conversion. We did not, Gino and I did not go into this lightly, we tested it backwards, forwards, upside down. I put in my own accounts, I tested it by phone. We found a few glitches, there were some things that we worked out, but it wasn't, it wasn't anything that was a showstopper. Their customer service is top-notch, MCC was top-notch, and a lot of the people that are in Invoice Cloud have come over from MCC. So you've got almost the same group of people that are your support mechanism. They will be, once the, the number is rolled out, the phone number, their entire support takes over for implementation of any questions, if you need to reset your PIN, if you forgot your password, anything in that realm of what you're used to in paying an online bill. So it's, it's an exciting thing, I wanted to share, we're going to roll this out, and then see what kind of reaction we get here, and then take a step forward, potentially with the debit and credit at the window. I'm a little leery about that because of security issues, because our window is, it's a blocked environment, so the kiosk would have to be outside of our window.
Can't do a tangible pin pad that you slide out?
You, it would be, it would be cumbersome. We're working very hard to try to get it as convenient as possible, so that's kind of step three, step three in this whole process. The, the nice piece about this is the phone, the introduction of the phone piece, which is huge for us. I'm hoping it gets as much activity as I'm optimistically thinking that it will. The other thing is that it's, the real-time piece we talked about, the reconciliation is, as far as the treasurer is concerned, my thought process was to go through the entire process, including recon, and how it's going to affect my treasurer. Virtually, we're using the exact same account at Rockland Trust Company. So essentially, what's happening now is, is exactly going to happen, hopefully, with more volume and nothing more. It's the same account we're using. It should, it will be seamless to those that use it. So if you guys have any questions, I just wanted to kind of give you an update of where we are with it. We're expecting to, I'm expecting to flip the switch by Memorial Day, not, probably before Memorial Day, with the idea that I want to, I want to send it out there, but I also want it to be coordinated with the buck slip that goes out in your bill, to explain to you in hard copy. What they've also provided us is the announcement, once it's all buttoned up and all the verbiage that I agree to and are happy with, this will be on our window, in a lucite frame in the tax collector's window. And with that will be the third page, which are the tear-away cards that look, will basically look like a business card, which will give the 844 number for the IVR. That'll be a setup right outside the tax collector's window. So you just, it's as simple as you come to the window, you can pick a card, and if you can't, if we can't offer the debit and credit at the window, well, you know what, you got your phone, go ahead and pay it, you can pay it with your phone. So it's exciting, it's a, it's a big step for the, for the collector's office. I wanted to roll it out in a billing period where we're starting a new fiscal year, we're going to get the most bang for our buck, which is our real estate bills. So 6,158 households will get that. The buck slip is just a simple insert, will not add to postage, the bulk postage will stay the same, and their marketing group is, again, it's, it's top-notch. They've been very zealous about what we want, and they'll put in anything we want, and they'll keep, we'll be able to keep it at cost, as far as how much it costs to send out a regular bill anyway, so. That's our update, and we're kind of excited about it, and it's, it's kind of something we've been working towards, it's been in the works for about six months now, and it's finally coming to fruition, which is really nice.
Okay, anybody have any questions for Judy?
No, thank you, Judy.
You are quite welcome, anytime.
I just have one question.
Sure.
Is this a flat fee you pay annually, or is this like a monthly charge?
It is a convenience fee that you pay with each transaction, and that's a very good question. You will, with the, with the notification in the, in the insert of your bill, you'll be notified of the sliding scale for credit card usage, and they call it a electronic check, which is basically an ACH. What they do is they go through the nightly, pull it out of your checking account. That only costs 35 cents. The convenience fee for credit cards can, can get steep, depending on, they have, they have the scale, which will be put into the slip, but you are not only alerted there, but you're also alerted at checkout. Like you enter into what you want in your card, and you can always opt out, and say, you know what, I'm not paying this convenience fee, this is, this is too much that I expected. I think, I want to say it's like 2.5 percent of the percentage.
Generally what it is.
Yes, of what you're paying. Most people that pay excise tax do it through their checking account because the bill is so small. So they pay the 35 cents for the bill rather than put it on the credit card. But now we are finding, in this new millennium age, that people are more apt to use credit cards because they have benefits of, of points and everything else, and, and they're more apt to be, to, to pay off with a credit card. Also, it, it also would behoove them, because if you get into a status where you're starting to get interest attached to your real estate bill, it's 12 percent interest every day. So a lot of people look at that and say, well, you know what, I get a credit card that's much less, I'm going to pay it on my credit card, get rid of it, and then I'm avoiding that 12 percent hit. So it's a great question, Kara, but that, all that information will be divulged to the, to the general populace when we put it in, in front of the insert.
I can board to it.
Yes.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Thank you.
Thank you, Judy.
Thanks, guys.
My question, no question?
No. There you go, there you go. Instant comma.
Thank you, Judy.
Next on the agenda is the open session minutes from April 2, 2019. I want to take a motion.
Make a motion to approve the open session minutes.
Motion in a second, all those in favor? Unanimous. Okay. Next on the agenda, Cub Scout Yard Sale Town Hall Plaza, Saturday, May 18, from 9 to 2 p.m. Anybody here from the Cub Scouts?
I don't think Terry's on here, no.
Okay.
But they've done this before, and it's all, I've gone, well, I know they did it last year, and everything went well.
Okay, so I have an email from Terry Davidson, saying we'd like to request Saturday, May 18 for the date this year. If you could add that to the board's talking agenda for us, be right after the meeting if you approve it.
So we don't know, we don't know a time?
Yeah, I don't see a time.
We don't? Jim, and if I may, you're running a little bit ahead of schedule tonight, and I think we were, we were telling folks from 7 o'clock on, so you may have some, some on-time arrivals.
All right. All right, next on the agenda, Rockland Special Education Tool Booth, Saturday, May 18, range date, May 25. Marcy, come on up.
Would like, if possible, the dates were given. The dates were given previously, would like to do the 11th with the range date of the 18th, due to Memorial Day weekend is the 25th. So the SpedPAC Tool Booth is the only fundraiser we do all year, to help kids in the special ed programs throughout the community and after-school programs. And then also, right now, we have five kids that have applied for scholarships this year, so hopefully, the Tool Booth will do well so that we can give all five something. So if you could let us do it on the 11th with the range date of the 18th.
Yeah, have you talked with the police chief, or?
We were told to come to the Selectmen Board first and get the date, and then contact them.
Okay.
So we can contact him tomorrow morning.
How are you for volunteers this year? I know last year it was.
We're looking for volunteers, that's why we're not doing the 4th, because I was the only one, and even my husband, that drives the horses, that, you know, we stand in between. I'd be dragging them down North Street.
Are you in one location and two locations?
Two.
Center, right, and Hingham?
Yep, Mm-hmm, Hingham and North.
North half.
Oh, and North half?
Right.
Okay.
From what time on?
So from 9.
To 1.
To 1.
Anybody have any other questions?
No, I don't have any questions. I've, like, I volunteered for this, all I can give is back, and it's just, like, a great, like, event, I love volunteering for, I don't have any idea what I'm doing those weekends, but if I have any free time, I'll be in touch, but.
Yes, I am. We could use all the volunteers.
Yes, we'd love that.
Who should people reach out to if they are interested in volunteering?
Either Michelle Kippinger or Marcy Little Conley.
Okay.
We're both on Facebook, I can, my email's mkconley@verizon.net.
And we have a Rockland CPAC page on Facebook, where they can contact us that way also.
Awesome, thank you.
So I make a motion, Mr. Chairman, to approve the CPAC Tool Booth on, on Saturday, May 11, with a range date of Saturday, May 18, just contingent on approval from the Police Department.
I'll second that motion.
Motion in a second, all those in favor? Unanimous.
Great, good luck.
When we hear from?
The Police Department.
Should we just talk to Susan?
Yeah, just mention this to her.
Okay.
Sounds great. Next, wait. Next on the agenda, Town Administrator Search Committee update.
Jim, I'll make it, next Monday evening, beginning at 6 o'clock, your lineup, I didn't put the right memo in your books, but the 6 p.m. interview is Mr. Unsaldi, 7 o'clock is Mr. Gallagher, and 8 o'clock is Mr. Lapp. That is the order in which Mr. Lynch has arranged for them to, to interview. And we do have some questions worked up, I've got hard copies that, you know, that I'll distribute to the board, and I think, I think we sent them out electronically within the last 24 hours or so as well. Any comments or additions that any board members might want to make, by all means, let us know, and we'll, and we'll work it out. But the manner in which you conducted the town accountant interviews worked out pretty well. If there's an additional question, remember the rule that you had last week, if you have an additional question, once, when you have your scripted assignment, ask your scripted question, and then if you have another one of your own, go right, you know, go right ahead. That seemed to work out.
Yeah, that's great.
Yeah.
Okay, any questions?
No, sounds great. No questions, it's just, it's, it's exciting that we've, we've got three good candidates. We've already filled our Assistant Town Administrator with a, with a great person, and tonight, we did the town accountant, so we are getting close to, to fill in the, all the open spots, and we can actually really get going, so, looking forward to it.
Getting the band back together, absolutely. Okay, next on the agenda, capital planning update. Rich?
How are you, Mr. Harris?
All right, Ms. Penny, how are you?
Doing good.
You should have in your books a copy of the capital plan, as well as a summary sheet of the priorities and ranking of all the projects that we had. There were a number of projects that we went through, met with each of the department heads, starting in December, went right up through the middle of April, went through and requested any articles that they were planning on presenting to the final, Finance Committee, and to the town for approval at town meeting. We need to look at any articles that are over $50,000 in expenditure with an estimated lifespan of greater than five years. We looked at all the projects that the departments had, went through all the scoring, ranked them, set them out on the plan, as well as looked at what other projects they had in the upcoming years in each of the departments, so that we could set up a plan for the next five years, as far as what was expected at this time. When we went through the rankings, if each, if there was a score that was the same, when we ranked them, if there was a, if there was a project that was not scheduled for this year, that was the one that got bumped down. So the one that got, the one that was scheduled for this year got ranked higher than a schedule, something that was pushed off for a couple of years. There was, it's come to my attention that there is an article or a warrant out there that, for the Community Preservation Committee, I guess, that has not come to capital planning yet, for about $77,000.
So does that, does that actually have to go through capital planning, because it's a totally separate fund?
That's, that's the $500,000 question.
Mr. Quiffig?
I don't think I'm charging that much, but I'll answer it anyway.
I've seen your bills.
I don't know, I've seen your bills.
The, the Capital Planning Committee was set up on a charter provision several years ago, and it's got pretty clear language that, basically, as was already stated, any project over $50,000 would be useful like five years or more. The capital, the Community Preservation Act was adopted after that, but, and we have a Community Preservation Committee, but that doesn't change the obligation for their capital projects, and they have a $77,000 article that has to go through the Capital Planning Committee. So the Capital Planning Committee's obligations are to review it, and basically, to consider it and decide whether or not they're going to include it in their report. And, and I think there was an equal amount of confusion with regard to the Finance Committees, or whether they would.
Yeah, because it is, it's, it's unique, it's different than anything we've done.
The, the Finance Committee can certainly defer to the CPC if they choose to, but there has to be a report to the Capitol for it. So they do have to consider it, if it's not considered, and again, they don't have to vote it up or down, but if it's not considered by the Capital Planning Town Meeting, can't vote on it.
Can't vote on it, okay.
And as of, as of now, we have got.
All right, so I'm going to make sure that we reach out to Derek Ewan and Judy, and make sure that they do what they need to do. Because I'm sure there's some confusion on their part as well. I don't think it was clear in anyone, what, this is, it's really the first time that we've encountered this with, with the CPC.
Yeah, so what I, what I can try and do is see if I can schedule a meeting for, before town meeting, that night, and perhaps.
Yeah, you could definitely do.
You know, something where we can amend the plan at that point in time, and, you know, put it on the plan if necessary.
Okay.
And then I can, you know, give you an amended plan after the fact.
I think that would work, okay.
You know, if I can get the, you know, all of the members present at the, you know, prior to town meeting, just before it starts, but.
I believe that they did meet with the Finance Committee, it's all, presented some information, so there should be some information you can get in advance of a meeting with them.
We'll be sure, staff will be sure that that, that occurs.
Yeah. Connect everyone.
Anybody have any questions about the plan or the process?
Well, yeah, I think, just, you know, from a resident's perspective, can you just go into, and I know you guys have done this in the past, but can you go into how you guys develop the ranking system and the score for, for capital projects?
Sure. There's, there's a, I don't have one of the ranking sheets with me, but there's a, no, I have the, I have that ranking sheet, I don't have one of the scoring sheets. We have, there's a scoring sheet that we get from the state, which has criterias of what the different projects are, and it lists the, the priority to the department, priority to the town, whether or not there's a plus or minus fiscal component to the project, whether or not there's grant money to the project, and then how that, and then the useful life of the project. So we take all of those and score them in a scale of 1 to 10. So we take all of those and score them in a scale of 1 to 10 for each of those projects independently, um, from one project to the other. So the, the sprinkler system at the McKinley School would be scored totally separate to the road project for, uh, North Union Street. We just, this is what it is. We take each individual project individually, go through the criteria based on the, the priorities and what, you know, what needs to be done, and we score based, and then we just total, total the scores. And then after we've totaled all of the scores, you have all of the scores listed, and then you just, basically, I just sorted on the score column to do the rankings.
Anybody have any questions?
Uh, the only thing which I just wanted to, I would say is, uh, thank you, it's you and your committee I attended. Uh, one of your meetings earlier in the year, and, um, oh, you know, we're really just looking through this, uh, this evening, just, oh, like, we emphasized, oh, to all of us that, oh, like, your committee's work is really the foundation of, oh, like, all the investments that we make, oh, you know, like, oh, like, at town meeting, like, oh, you know, and in the year to come, so I just want to thank you for your work and that of your committee as well, so.
Thank you, Richard.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Uh, next on the agenda, Adopt Town of Rockland Small Cell Policy. Jim?
I'm not at all prepared to discuss this, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Not prepared.
So, tables? Is there a, more information on that?
Yeah.
Take it up next time. Consider it distributed for, for future consideration.
Yeah, could you, uh, invite Attorney Galvin to, to our next meeting?
Sure.
For this, uh, maybe not the next one, being the Town Administrator, but the one following.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, I, motion to table?
I'll make a motion to the table.
Second.
All those in favor?
Okay.
Okay, item number 10, Youth Department Updating Programs. Gene?
Hi, Gene. Good, good evening. Nice to see you all again. I think it was a week ago at this exact time that I saw you. Probably should have done it all together, but, um, couldn't get that quite under control. So, um, you have in front of you kind of a little report that I wrote up of what we've been doing for the second half of the year for the Youth Commission. Um, I just want to publicly thank every single department in the town. We work with everyone, um, you know, police, fire, accounting, treasurer's office, whenever we have questions, Sue I is there, she's helping us out, um, and Marcy, human resources, even the Veterans Agent and Council on Aging, everyone. Everyone's been there, Highway, you name it. So I really want to thank every single person in all of those departments because we've, we've talked with each and every one of them, or have had to work with each, each and every one of them. So I'm pleased to report that, um, we've had an increase of registrations over last year. Um, we're up by 355 registrations to date compared to last year.
So how many years in a row is that, that you've seen an increase?
That's five years. So I'll be here five years and five months, I think.
Since you've started, there's been an increase every single year.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know what that total increase is, but...
But, yeah.
Um, but yes. So we're, um, real excited that we hope to break that 2,000 registration mark by the summertime. We're working hard to gain, to, to, uh, get to that number. So currently, um, we're working on summer and fall, and we're just actually, believe it or not, finishing up winter. I know we've hit spring, but it's kind of a crossover. Um, but it, I, I listed it out here, but one of the things that we've seen an increase in, and you wouldn't believe it, but this town loves soccer and basketball. So those are the two programs that have really hit the ground running, and we've added a lot of, um, additional classes, specifically for the little kids. We did start a men's over 21 basketball league. Um, the school started doing free programming, so our arts programs started not to run, um, science, technology, all of those types of programs started not to run. So we, um, decided to go over the men's, a men's basketball league. We had a few people interested in it. Now that it's nice, I think they're actually outside, so they're not attending that program, but we hope to, you know, include volleyball in that, and, um, actually, we did have a very well-attended volleyball program. We're in the process of having a conversation with, um, an, an AAU team, um, that will come in and hopefully do some programming for us. They're the experts. I, I, I ran it along with Jared, and although I played volleyball right through college, I think those days are over. Those kids really, they're kids. I don't think I am anymore. Anyways, um, so we move, we fast forward to the summer. Most of our programs are running outside. Um, we have the little kids' T-ball and baseball. Um, I think those are up to age five. Um, we're, we're going to be running a flag football. That's our own Rockland Youth Commission football. Um, and then in the summertime, it's NFL flag football, which has been well-attended, um, and we hopefully will have that well-attended. We're also working with, um, an AAU basketball, uh, club called Premier, and they're going to be running clinics as well as, um, hopefully a summer league, so we're just wrapping up those conversations. We'll be doing our kids' Spartan training, which was, um, very popular last year. So this is a group of kids that are at Hart South Park. They go running through the woods, jumping over obstacles, lifting things. They ran through the pond, up a hill, through a spider web, spider web, and, um, and then finally, we did make a mud puddle for them because they wanted to get really dirty. Um, so at the end of the training, they run their obstacle course, and, um, and there are medals to those, those participants. Um, we're, um, excited to bring in Introduction to Softball. I know that the softball, uh, youth softball has been struggling a little bit with their numbers, so we're trying to draw in instructional softball, um, girls' softball, or actually anyone that wants to play softball. So they check out our website on that. Um, let me see, what else can I go through here? Shamrock Summer Baseball, we're going to have them over the summer, as well as a soccer program, imagine that. And then our own eight-week summer program up at Hart South Park for ages, uh, 3 to 15, which, um, I promise is going to be fun-filled. I've actually met and talked with, and I think the staff from last year started texting me in February with ideas. So, so I've been working on that. But most importantly, we have this great sign language program. Um, I believe now we have registered 25 people, so we've maxed out on that. And then we're going to run a, a series of sign language, so you could take Sign Language 2, 3, so on and so forth. One of the great things about this is that teachers can get their, um, I forget what the points are called, but they can get, um, it's not accreditation. What is it? ECUs or something like that?
Oh, PVPs.
Something to that effect.
CEUs.
There is an acronym out there somewhere.
Continue Education.
Yeah, Continue Education Credits, um, if they take this. Um, but we have, uh, the youngest one is age seven, and the oldest one, I think, is 68 that's taking the class. So we're very excited, it's for all ages. Um, whoa, we got a lot. So, um, I'm trying to go as fast as I can. Adele Leonard with our food service at the schools, um, had, uh, registered for a grant for a children's gardening club. We'll be running that up at Hart South Park. We got enough money to start, uh, five beds, and I believe the Parks Department has already, um, put those together for us. Um, so we have a student from Rockland High School, he'll be a senior next year, who actually takes care of the gardens at the high school, so he'll be running this program with my guidance. So we've been developing the curriculum for that, and we're ready to kick that off, um, probably sometime in May. We just have to firm up a couple of other things, but we are very grateful to get that grant, and I believe it was about $1,500 that, that that grant was. Um, what, a couple of last little things that we're looking to do is a skateboarding program for kids. We're hoping that by the time the basketball court is built at Hart South Park this spring, that, um, we can get that program in there, and we've had some interest in a street hockey program, so we're going to look into that. So, the Youth Commission couldn't be successful without its staff, right? We have a lot of part-time people, a lot, and they're all fantastic, but I have to give it up this year to my teen center staff. So those, the teen center's grown from, you know, 25 kids up to 60 to 80 kids per night, which is fantastic for a bunch of 6th to 9th graders. We do go beyond 9th grade, but, um, we actually, we don't see kids beyond 9th grade. Would love it, but it doesn't happen. Um, the staff this year was very energetic, came to me, they wanted to do, uh, additional programming, not just come to the teen center and hang out. So we've had a few dances, um, just like the previous board put in place, but, so we'd had those dances, but every week, there's something different, whether it's, um, they do bowling, or they have a basketball tournament, or a dodgeball tournament. Um, they had a shootout, a basketball shootout tournament. They did LCR, the kids didn't know how, how to play LCR, and, um, special bingo. Um, we've got, we got actually money from the Eagles. We didn't get money. We got, uh, prizes from the Eagles, so we were able to give away prizes to the kids. They were just really excited about it. Um, and then, in addition to that, the Police Department has come in and they've started walking through the teen center, um, which that whole piece of the community is kind of coming together. Um, I just think it's, I think it's fantastic. I think it's great for the kids. I think it's great for the officers. Um, right down to, I believe, there was one officer that got beat, um, at a, at a half-court shootout, so he had to hit the snack bar and dole out some money. So that was kind of great. I have to, they've really done some amazing things with those kids. Um, just trying to, we, we are, uh, we just had the Easter egg hunt, that was great. Um, we estimate that there was somewhere between 150 to 175 people there. We have Rockland Day coming up, and in the fall, I'll be back fairly soon to see you about a Touch a Truck event. Um, and then we added self-help. Um, it went full force this year. They were there four days a week, Monday through Thursday, 9:00 to noon. Um, they serviced over, they had over 1,700 registrations over this past year, um, and out of those 1,700 registrations, 85% of them were Rockland residents. So, um, that says a lot for the free programming that they do. Um, they do kindergarten readiness, Read to Rise. Um, we, we, I asked them actually to do a grandparents' class because we have a lot of grandparents that are taking care of their grand, their grandkids now. Some have full custody. Um, so this was a great program for them, as well as a STEM program. So that was, um, that's been very useful. We have our taught enrichment program, which I know that most of you know about. Um, so that's still going full force. We had, um, 29 enrolled this year. We're still doing a separate music program and a, a gym program for them. Um, so I think that's about it. So, uh, some of the challenges that we face, like I said, the school's doing their free programming, but I think we're, we're trying to combat that and, um, and see, you know, our, our registrations have gone up in the gym, but we're still trying to come up and have a, a different creative avenue to generate more classroom activities for, um, other kids. Um, so the, the building, as you all know, has been kind of a little bit of a hurdle, the stairs needing to be done, the elevator, most recently, the urgency of the sprinkler system. So I think, um, I'm preaching to the choir, I think you all know that. Um, so, um, so that's it. Does anyone have any questions about our programs or what we do?
I have one question.
No, go ahead.
The eight-week summer program?
Yep.
How much does that cost per child for them to go?
So this year, uh, it depends on the program. So right now, for our full-day program, which is the most attended, it's $170 for the entire week, and that includes Friday. Um, Fridays, we go on field trips. Um, the chipmunks have, they can either go Monday, Tuesday, or Wednesday, Thursday. Um, if they go for the full four days, it's $99. And then our teen, teen program is just Monday through Thursday, with the option of them, um, joining us on our Friday field trips.
Thank you.
So Gene, um, with all the expanded programs, what are the fields that you're using? Because I know as a town, we, we face challenges, we face a lot of challenges. Another one is how many fields that we have, and where are they, and what do you do, so...
Sure. No, that's a great question. Um, so we try to use Hart South Park as much as we can. Right now, lacrosse is on that field. Um, the softball, the taught soccer program, our T-ball programs on Saturday, those will be running out of Jefferson right now.
Okay.
Um, so, uh, it can be a little soggy, I'm not going to lie. Sometimes, when it does rain, I cancel the programs because the, we generally use the outfield for a lot of that, and that's, that can be underwater sometimes.
It's a little spongy in right field?
Just a little. Yeah. The coaches don't like it.
But those, those are generally the, the two fields that you, that you use?
Yeah, for the most part.
Anybody else?
I don't have anything. Thank you, Gene.
I don't have a question, I, I do have a comment. So, I said that, so the five years that, um, that you've been in there, we've seen the numbers go up. As a lot of you may know, I was very active in youth sports, and the town has, in that same time, virtually every youth program has seen a decline in the participation. So my hat's off to you for, you know, in a challenging environment, able to put programs in there that are different, that are attracting kids, so, thank you very much.
Yeah, I think, um, to be truthful, uh, we get them so young that they're trying things out for the first time, and I believe that's where we fall with youth sports. I think that they, that we're the try, they try it. Um, you know, we're one of the only, um, towns around that don't have field hockey as a, a sport, and so that's something that we're looking to put together, um, and run some sort of a, you know, basic field hockey program for maybe middle-school students, and hopefully it'll get up to the high school. Um, so that's a big one. And another one is rugby. Everyone thinks that rugby is all about tackling, but actually, it's really not. When you play sevens rugby, it's touch, just like flag football. Um, you're, you're, you're not tackling, you actually don't even tackle till high school in rugby. So, um, I actually played rugby in high, in college, and, um, I'm not going to tell you that my back doesn't hurt, but, but it does, and, um, but it was a great sport. Um, you know, I think sports are important for kids in so many reasons, but I could preach on that for a long time, and I, I just, I was just stopped. Great. Does anyone have any questions?
No, I just want to say thanks, Gene, for all the work you do.
Thank you.
I mean, just, so Richard's pointing at the registrations over the, the five and a half years you've been there. It's through the roof. I know my kids do some of the, some of the different, uh, activities, and they really enjoy it, so, uh, I don't think the program would be what it is without your leadership, and we really appreciate it.
Thanks. And you have to thank Casey because she's...
Yep, Casey as well, absolutely.
She, every, behind every great person is somebody else, and I have two somebodies and a whole lot of part-time somebodies, so, thank you.
Thank you, Gene.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
So, uh, so I saw Attorney Galvin come in.
Yeah, we're going to go back to...
We're going to go back to the Adopt Town, uh, Town of Rockland Small Cell Policy.
That's great. You're pretty astute. Mike, I'm sorry for, for dropping in, but I was here for the CBA meetings.
No, no problem. No problem.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening. How are you?
So this policy that, uh, I've recommended that the Board of Selectmen adopt is in response to a recent FCC order, uh, which basically, uh, was intended to narrow the ability of municipalities to, well, limit, uh, the small cells that are being erected in order to expand the 5G network for all of the cellular carriers. Um, because, um, this wasn't, didn't come to my attention in sufficiently in time to create a bylaw, it was my recommendation that we adopt a policy similar to what a number of other Mass, Massachusetts municipalities have done, so that we would have a procedure in place, uh, and have an expression of how we would handle those in the event we get any future requests to install, uh, these small cell antennas on utility poles and things of that nature. Um, the FCC order basically, um, establishes a shot clock and extended timeframe for these to be approved. It limits the amount of fees that can be assessed to a certain amount that they determine to be reasonable, uh, so I've recommended that we adopt all of those maximum fees that the FCC has indicated they'll tolerate, uh, and I think it'll give us a nice, um, policy framework with how to address these as they, as you see them coming in. This probably affects towns like Rockland, um, with some density in their populations. There's just simply not enough, um, coverage actually in town for regular cell service, and we have a few gaps in town. Um, but this, this really is intended to cover the data gaps that exist, and, uh, the towns that I'm involved with, I've all recommended that, uh, adopt these policies, uh, and going forward, I'll probably be recommending that we adopt a bylaw. Okay? But the policy will work. Um, we've had these circumstances with... But this, this really is intended to cover the data gaps that exist. And the towns that I'm involved with, I've all recommended that adopt these policies. And going forward, I'll probably be recommending that we adopt a bylaw, okay? But the policy will work. We've had these circumstances with, I think, AT&amp;T within the last year, but this was prior to the FCC ruling, so we handled it a little differently. So this gives us a nice statutory framework to operate until we've put this as a formal bylaw.
Any questions?
Two, Chairman. That was actually one of my questions. The, the, of the small cell, whatever it was, that we approved up on the Commerce Drive last
Yeah, we gave them a We gave them a grant of location.
Got it, okay.
That's what we did, which would be the normal way we allow people to locate utilities within a right-of-way.
Okay.
So we're going to streamline that process, make it a little quicker. But it's also going to provide a revenue source for us. We get an initial application fee. Depending on whether we own the utility pole that they want to use, we might even get some rent.
Okay.
Town of Stonem has, owns many of its utility poles, so they're going to pay us like a thousand dollars a year or so for each pole. So, you know, if we can find that, we'll do that. And encourage them to go there. But it's certainly going to be something that we see more of, because these small cells typically cover a range from as small as five-hundred feet to like fifteen-hundred feet. So it's not a huge area. And they just supplement the ability of the tow, the town's cell towers to factuate gap coverage.
Can I just ask one more question?
Sure.
This is a crazy after-work question. But in our communities that are contemplating actually, oh, taking down their telephone poles, like and putting out the power under the street. I would say we did that ten years from now, like and we had a small cell receptacle, whatever it was.
Yeah.
How would we deal with that? I mean
Well, you'll
Especially if we didn't own the telephone.
Well, so, it just so happens that Stonem, one of the other towns that actually John and I both work in, actually has a main transmission line from Eversource that's going to be routed right through the downtown area. It's a main transmission line. It doesn't affect these cell towers at all. As a matter of fact, if you've been down to Newbury Street in Boston recently, they literally take those historic light poles that exist on Newbury Street, and they replace the entire light pole, and on the top, there's a little antenna, and it's painted black, you almost, you, you would never even notice it until somebody pointed it out to you. Particularly where there's a heavy density and there's a lot of data usage, you see these now. So, you know, I don't know how many we would anticipate happening, but you might see some, you know, close to Union Street, or in some of the other more densely populated areas where there isn't great coverage or enough capacity. So I figured it was a good idea for you to adopt this. And then you'll be compliant with the FCC regulations too, which is the most important thing.
Yes. Any other questions? I want to take a motion.
I'll, I'll make a motion to adopt the small cell wireless policy.
Second. A motion and a second, all those in favor?
Thanks, Paul, thank you very much. Thank you.
Before we move on, does anybody from the Cub Scouts here? Anybody come in? Okay. Okay, number eleven on the agenda. Special town meeting and annual town meeting warrant discussion.
Chairman, as I think you're all aware now, the, the annual and special town meeting warrants have been, have been completed. They're ready for your, for your execution, and arrangements have been made for the constable to come here Thursday, nine-thirty a.m. to pick up and begin posting warrants throughout the town. You have, as, as I described once or twice, you do have a couple of outstanding issues that, that are unresolved, but the, the warrant with the, you know, tremendous help of Mr. Clifford in the, in the accounting office is in, is in order. You know, you're ready to post it, you're ready to do business. And you've got less than a handful of issues, one or two of them probably really important for you to discuss, but you've got only that in your twenty days before town meeting. I'm confident this time to, you know, to resolve those things or sharpen your arguments if you agree to disagree come town meeting time. So under the circumstances, Mr. Chairman, the number of people that helped out, you know, to produce this document and all the thought and work that, that went into it, you've all done, you've done great to be in this position, you know, twenty days before town meeting. So that's all I have to say about that. I know you're going to want to take up some individual issues. Mr. Clifford may have, may have something to say himself also, but it's ready to roll.
Okay, with that being said, I think we've all had the opportunity to review this document. If there are any, any issues or warrant articles that other members would like to discuss. Feel free to bring it up.
So bringing up, I, I just want to make one comment before we go into it. I, I'm well aware of what the process is, being a past member of the, of the FinCom. I want to say thank you to Vice Chair O'Loughlin, who took a very active role in this. Also to John Pumphrey in the, in the FinCom. John stepped up when several members had to vacate. And I think working in probably the most challenging environment that we have seen probably in the last eight to ten years, with our town accountant gone, part-time town accountant, just with all the changes. And to see how this process went, this group did not miss a beat. We are in, overall, other than a couple of things that we'll discuss, we're in pretty good shape, and they have vetted that, that process and did a tremendous job. So I just want to say thank you to, to all those involved.
And I just want you, I'll echo Mr. Panee's comments, but also thank Mr. O'Loughlin for his work, especially regarding the, our funding for many of the articles over the past few weeks, Mike, the time that our youth have put into our, this whole, this whole effort with Mr. Purcell and everyone, with Serena and, and everyone here is. I just want to thank you for that. First of all, with that being said, one of the, I think, outstanding issues to address are the, are the ongoing needs at the, at the community center. Our, namely, the sprinkler system. And over, for, as long as I've been a selectman, that building has become our near and dear to me. And over the past, seems like over the past year, it actually has been. You know, we've been working on like a plan for that building and a way to potentially fund other things that have to be funded at the building. A few things over the past year, based on all the staffing issues and the, and the capacity that we've had, it's been, or, or it wasn't very hard to do that. At the same time, we launched this, this economic development plan with Mass Development. Our four units really includes looking at the future of the building, but, which still holds a lot of our promise. In the meantime, however, I think all of us know the urgency of addressing the sprinkler system in the building. And, and I'm actually proposing tonight, like if we could, that, like we re-look at Article thirty-eight. Our two, our using that as an avenue to, our to begin addressing other sprinkler system, which no matter what we do, the sprinkler system will be an investment in the building. The, the building has to have a sprinkler system, regardless of what we do. And, but in the meantime, early this evening, we heard from Ms. Blaney, and our, the demand for the building, like in the value of the building shares for the youth commission is, like, is almost inquantifiable. The same thing for the daycare program, the same thing for self-help. And now to our veterans as well, now that we've, we have relocated our veterans agent up there. So, as I mentioned, the urgency of this whole thing really, like, is a, like, has, has made this thing more of a timeless of the essence situation. Actually, last week, we brought, like, applicable department heads and our staff together to talk about like a game plan for the building in the short term, in terms of addressing this, but also, oh, you know, this ongoing, oh, we have, I continue this ongoing conversation. We continue to have, like, about the future of the building and how that future fits into our needs as a community, how it fits into what the demand for the services provided in the building already are, and how that all interrelates with everything else we have happening in the town. So at the end of the meeting on Friday, thanks to the advice and counsel of, oh, Mr. Purcell, like, and Mr. Constable, oh, you know, we, the group there, all came up with like a, a scenario that while we continue to look at all options here, we didn't want to miss the opportunity that the upcoming town meeting provides as one of really many tools to be able to address this whole thing in a very, oh, time-efficient way. And so to that end, I'll rediscuss modifying Article thirty-eight. Our to allow the, of the town to be able to, oh, go out to bond funding. Our for a, you know, like an updated sprinkler system, and our, and to be able to make, like, any other, like, related, our very short-term needs that have to be made there to continue other programming and continuing the services that the building provides while we continue to flesh out this whole project. So to that end Oh, yes, the current Article thirty-eight, as, as written, is will the town vote to raise and appropriate or take from available funds a sum of twenty-five thousand dollars for repairs at the McKinley Community Center, a community center building, or take any action relative thereto. Our, so I would propose, based on help from our esteemed counsel, is that we would edit that article to allow, oh, to allow this board to bond repairs or to authorize, to have the town authorize that this board to go out to bond, to make needed repairs, up to an amount that we would frankly discuss this evening, so.
So Mike, I'm, I'm a little confused on that, on that article. That's the one that's for twenty-five thousand dollars?
Yes.
So why would we be bonding an article for twenty-five thousand dollars?
I know, we'd be editing. We'd be, I like, I like, actually, like amending the article.
All right, so I, so I, so let me preference this first. A building does not make a program. The programs make themselves. Where they survive or where they reside, to me, is secondary at this point. So as part of this, it's all well and good to put an article in there that allows us to bond. But there's only two ways for us to come up with money through bonding. And one is through a debt exclusion, or the second is through operational budgets. So, you know, I don't know, so first off, I don't think we have a clear understanding of, of what the true costs are in the building. So I've heard different numbers floated around from anywhere from one-point-one million dollars to potentially half a million dollars. If the, the sprinkler system could be an external sprinkler system, but if we were to do that, there's weight involved, we have to get an engineering study, we get to go down all these different roads. So, and at the end of the day, we still have a building that, and quite honestly, looking at the capital plan, the elevator is, is a higher priority than the sprinkler system, according to the capital plan. We have asbestos in there, we've got antiquated mechanicals in there. So there are other issues in that building. So, so on the, on the, on the stairway, there's asbestos tiles. So my concern on this is without a true plan and thought of what we are entering into, we are jumping feet, feet-first into a temporary repair to try to allow the building to remain open, when in reality, the building is not going to be able to be remained open. So the fire chief and the, and the building inspector have already made very clear when the building closes. There's no way that we could actually get this done, go bond, get the sprinkler systems in before the dates are, are, are done. So we got to find something short-term for all these, these programs. And I think we're better served by doing that in the short term, and then having a larger conversation on, in finding out exactly what is needed to bring that building back up. So I can't see spending a million dollars in a, in a building that we also need an elevator, and we need pointing on the bricks, and the mechanical systems in there are antiquated and outdated, and a roof and everything else, if we don't have a, a clear and true picture. I also know from the design of that building, it's probably not ideal for a community center, youth center. So, you know, I just think we need to look at all options. I've had conversations with, with many people out here, including Jean, including Chief Duffy, Alan Cronin, the school department. You know, and I, I'm not saying I have a solution right now, but I do know that there, there are potential options out there. I know that there are revenues, rents that, that are being paid currently to that building that we may be able to do with some, some open buildings out there to actually house, as we have open office spaces, office space, where we might actually be able to house some of these programs and actually do a build-out that doesn't cost us a lot more than what's being paid in the rent. And we can put a, a true plan together. You know, one of the, one of the reasons I asked Jean on, on where the fields are, the downside of that location, we don't have fields. We, we have a, a less-than-full-size gym. So that program already has to go on the road to do things. In conjunction with a school project that is going into the next steps, the Jefferson School is going to be, if, if that passes, the Jefferson School is going to be torn down, and that is going to become field space. You know, so again, I think that there are larger conversations to have before we jump to this. Because ultimately, even if we go and do this, that building is going to have to be emptied. We're going to have to find people, homes, before we can even address, if we can fund it. And the problem is, if we fund this internally, and it's, ends up being one-point-one million dollars, and we can only bond it over five years, that's potentially two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars a year that we got to find out of, of an operational budget. So where are we taking that from?
A few things. Number one, in terms of, of the ideas about Jefferson or any, like, or everything else, I agree with you, Rich. I mean, we do have a lot of options in terms of Jefferson, or in terms of other buildings that will hopefully be vacated in the, our current years, or in the following years, based on the projects we hopefully have coming down the pipeline. I think for purposes of this discussion, a few things. We're operating with programs that exist today, not in a few years, and we're dealing with the realities that we have for the programming in our April two thousand nineteen, our present-day needs. And frankly, I really worry about that if we wait any longer, like a few years or even a few months, we're not going to have these programs to even, I'll consider where their home will be.
So again, the buildings do not make the programs.
I understand, Rich, but where else But where else do you think we should go?
Mike, I've given a
We've looked at a whole bunch of the
I have, I have given a list.
Hold on a second.
No, I've given a list of things.
You've given a list, a few of them are unpractical, or they're things we've already explored. And frankly, this isn't the end of the road. This is an option that This is an option that we can use as we continue to work to address this issue.
So, where do you come up with the funds? So, if you can tell me where you come up with the funds, I may change this. So, tell me where.
For the debt service?
Yeah. Where do you find them?
Okay, our debt service will increase. Yes, you're right. In the meantime, our, you know...
So, you know, even obligation of a stadium that is coming on next year is $150,000 a year?
Okay, yes, I do.
So, that's adding on?
Yep.
Okay.
That's fine. And number one, I think one of the reasons we...
And how do we address the elevator? How do we address the leaking roof?
So, I...
How do we address everything else?
Like, we can do a...
So, first of all, this is a public safety concern.
Yeah.
Correct? So, we are going to house students and children in this facility, and what if something happens?
Well, the building only, as of right now, as Mr. Penny mentioned, the building will only be able to be open until, it's a work in progress, but the building is going to have to close sometime soon.
So, with that being said, let me read, let me read the letter from Chief Duffy to the board. It says, Dear Chairman Ryan, approximately one and a half years ago, it came to my attention, the attention of town officials that the water-based fire sprinkler system at the Rockland Community Center had become clogged and impaired due to corrosion in the pipes. Sprinkler contractors could not confirm if the system would be completely impaired, causing no water to flow, or if the system would work with a limited water flow. From that time to now, sprinkler contractors were consulted for repair solutions and replacement costs. Many parties, including Chief Duffy, have been working to find a solution to this problem. Not wanting to shut down the community center, as numerous programs, while a solution was sought, the Rockland Fire Department and Rockland Building Department worked with the community center personnel to ensure that building occupants were protected in case of fire. Steps were taken to ensure the other life safety systems in the building were up to code, which included a new fire alarm and smoke detection system throughout the building. All community center personnel were trained on fire evacuation procedures, and full-scale fire drills were conducted. It was also stressed that the building's excellent housekeeping was to be maintained. As of today, there are no definitive plans in place for the repair or replacement of the sprinkler system, and no urgency has been shown to bring this fire sprinkler system up to working condition. Therefore, for public safety reasons, we are ordering the building to be vacated until such time that the water-based fire sprinkler system is restored or replaced. We will allow the building to remain occupied and the current program's operational for two weeks to allow for arrangements and relocations to be made. There shall be a fire watch on duty at all times. The building is open and operational during these two weeks. Please note that this was the last option we wanted to take, but due to our growing concern for the safety of the building's occupants, it was necessary. Signed respectfully by Chief Scott Duffy and Building Commissioner Tom Rubel. This letter came in on 4/9. As of 4/12, Scott Duffy, Chief Duffy, sent this out of this amendment. After a meeting with community center personnel, school department officials, and Mr. Mullin of the Board of Selectmen, I agreed to allow the building to remain operational and open with a fire watch until the end of the school year in June. Ms. Blaney and I discussed the fire watch procedures, and they are implementing them Monday, April 15, 2019. Signed, Chief Duffy. So, I mean, that is, that, I guess, is the genesis of this conversation. It, it's been, unfortunately, a project that's been, you know, in front of us now for several years, and it's been kicked down the road by, by different boards and different administrations, and now, now it's up to us to solve. I don't think we're going to find an answer here tonight. I think both Mr. Mullin and Mr. Penny make, make very valid points. I, I think our focus right now should be to redirect and try to assist Ms. Blaney in, in finding homes for the programs in the meantime, as of, you know, from June on, and, and possibly into the fall. I, I don't think it's going to be an issue that's going to be resolved right away. We have downtown initiative coming through, Mike, right?
Oh, yeah.
So, they'll, they'll be looking at the downtown. We don't know what we're necessarily going to be doing with the building. Attorney Clifford, as far as Mike's suggestion recommending a bonding, does that in any, in any case, does that tie us to, to carry through, or is it just a placeholder to allow us that option if it, if it comes, comes to, to be?
I think the board is having a discussion about whether you should do something or what it is that you should do, and I'm trying to address procedurally how you could do it, the different options. There were two articles submitted by the Community Center Building Committee. One was 1.1 million dollars for the sprinkler system, and the second was $25,000 for general repairs. What Mr. Mullin was indicating was talking about amending one of the articles, and if there is going to be an amendment of an article that's already on the warrant, it's going to be within the scope, the original article. So, I would suggest that amending Article 38, which is currently for $25,000, to some seven-figure number is beyond the scope of what that article says right now. I think it would be within the scope of Article 37, the 1.1 million, to modify that instead of specifically saying the sprinkler system to say, bringing it up to code compliance. The other issue, and Mr. Mullin and I discussed this briefly today, there are triggers within the building code if we do renovations...
It's close to the next.
That if we go beyond a certain percentage of the value of the building, and I think the value of the building is probably generously listed at some, somewhere in the 300,000-500,000 dollar range.
Right.
If we did 1.1 million dollars, then we're all in.
We have to do everything in the building, bring it up to code.
Right.
Well, and so that's why, to back up just a minute, part of our plan in the meantime would actually involve, oh, like, bringing in an engineer to look at, oh, what, our modernizing the sprinkler system, there would do to the building, frankly, whether the building structurally would be able to handle it, and also whether it would trigger any of those thresholds as well, as well. But in order to do that, we have to, I'll start with some type of investment to even allow that engineering to happen, so we could have that information.
One of the things the board may wish to consider would be, and it would be within the scope of Article 38, to be, to recommend a sum of money to town meeting to do a feasibility study, which would address, number one, and, and I think this is a question that has yet to be answered, you know, what do we want to do with the building? And from there, the firm that you hire to do that would have to do a complete analysis of what would it cost to meet those functions, to meet that goal. And, and I think you can do that on a fairly short timeline if it were approved at this town meeting. We'd put out a request for qualifications to a qualified firm to do that kind of analysis to work with Gene and the other building users to find out what do we really need for space. From there, they develop a schematic plan, come up with architectural estimates, what, what would it cost to potentially do this? You know, I think it's very achievable to come back to a fall town meeting, but at that town meeting, to be able to say, this is what we want to do, and this is what the total cost would be to do those things. And, and in my experience, over 25 years of doing this, sometimes the inclination is to start putting money into a building and then realizing later on, the overall cost and what we get in the end is not necessarily what we want.
Absolutely.
If we sell this building now, won't we have to put a sprinkler system in anyway?
You know, if you put out an RFQ, you know, but that's, I think that's a discussion that the, the downtown revitalization is doing.
So, Adam and John, I don't disagree with you on a feasibility study, but again, like, if we can, and I'm not saying this is a hard, oh, set-in stone plan, but as of right now, because frankly, we've only had the, the capacity to have a conversation in the future of the building, and how we're going to address the programmatic needs there, for really only the past three weeks, because we've only had the staff, our capacity to be able to do that, like, within that time in terms of here in Town Hall, like, at least if we, at least if the Board of Selectmen, if we could amend our Article 37, our, to, to give the Board of Selectmen authorization, like, and that's not saying we're going to take that authorization, but if, like, as we move forward to come up with a plan, there's a very good possibility that we might not have any options, oh, to do build-outs or to rent commercial space, or to do anything else. And based on where we are in the timeline, oh, that answer will probably likely come shortly after town meeting. And so, all, all I'm asking, if we could have almost like a placeholder there, like, where we ask the town to give us our authorization that we may or may not take, or, or like utilize, then at least as we move forward, we continue to have options in coming up with a plan. Because my hunch here, like, in my fear, which I want to, I do everything to avoid, my fear is that if we wait for a fall town meeting, we're not going to have programs, we're not going to have enrollment, and frankly, we wouldn't have employees to do anything with these programs. And as we move forward over the next few weeks, to figure out what the plan is going to be, to get some better inclination for mass development, like, on what could be the future uses, just having that almost in our back pocket as a safety net, I like, I just think would be really important, because probably, probably about a dozen people, smart people, came around the table last Friday, and we talked about our buildings. We talked about our buildings like Holy Family, the old Tedeschi's building down on Market Street. We talked about a whole bunch of things. I mean, those buildings right now aren't possibilities, and I just fear if we continue to go down a path of, yes, we have to make a plan, we've been talking about that for years, and we don't have time to wait for that, we don't have time to wait to see what happens with the MSBA, we just need something that as we, as we continue to work this through, and as we continue to think this out, we have just a safety net. So, if worst comes to worst, we keep these programs intact, because honestly, based on the meeting we have Friday, there's a real fear, and I think that we, and I think the reality for the fear is there, that if we, that if we wait any longer than the summer to do anything with this, we're going to really run risk of losing this program, so...
So, Mike, when, can I, so, without knowing what the costs are, you want to put an article in there that allows us to bond?
Up to a certain level.
Okay. So, then we got to figure out where that comes from, all right, and where that impacts...
We increase the debt service.
Hold on, let me, I didn't introduce...
Talk to me like I'm an idiot.
Hey, guys, guys, hold on, hold on, I'm going to interrupt for...
So, here's, hold on, let me finish.
Let me just interrupt for a second.
So, hold on, let me, let me finish, please. So, here, the reality is, Mike, even if we were to go forward on this, okay? Structural engineer is going to have to be part of this, because we don't know what it can.
I agree. I said that from the beginning.
So, hold on, Mr. Mullin.
Hold on, guys, I'm going to stop, guys. Hold on, I'm going to stop both of yous for a second, just stop for a second. We can go back to this, but I just want you guys to take the emotion out of it.
I'm not emotional, Mike.
I know, but it's a discussion, all right? None of this is personal. It's a discussion between two board members for us to come to a determination for what's best for the programs in that building in the town, so...
So, with that said, I want to, I want to, I want to say, is that the reality is, even if we went forward and we put an article in and we had funding, by the time that that building, that we're able to get a structural engineer in, he does a report, we actually go out to bid, all right, because we got to get three bids on it, we go through the RFP process, we go through all that, we secure who's going to do that, and then the work gets done.
I understand.
We're looking, Mr. Mullin, please, I didn't speak when you were talking.
Sorry, I just said, I understand.
Okay. We're looking at best-case scenario, probably into the winter, before that could even all be done, by the time that everything is done and the work. Now, here's the other problem. Once you start doing repairs like that, as, as Mr. Clifford, Attorney Clifford pointed out, it can kick into other things. So, we may be able to do the sprinkler, but once we pass that point, that would not allow that building to open up, because we are not ADA compliant.
Agreed.
We, we have everything else. So, now, we could potentially spend a million dollars on a building that we still can't get into. My thought, my, my part on this is that we spend all of our energies right now to find a home for all these programs. To say that we don't have it, we do. So, we have buildings within the town that, we've got an occupancy rate of over 20% of office buildings and space in town. I actually do this for my work, where we're actually going and look for warehouse space and office space, all right? There is no reason why we couldn't find a, a space in town and then build it out to what we want, including putting a basketball court and everything in. When you look at the money that you want to spend on a building that we're not sure what we're going to do for and how, how much that's going to go, and you already look at rents that are coming in and fees coming in, we could actually pay for this without, so rent, that the school pays for the, for the daycare and fees that come in through, through the youth commission. We need to start looking at those things and what we might be able to do. Also, for a short period, you know, I, I've talked to a few people, we do have buildings available during the summer. So, as school closes, we have some available space for the summer, which then allows us to get through till the end of August.
But then what happens? Then where do we put them?
So, we have till the end of August to come up with what the answers are.
And those buildings have already been, been part of the conversation, these are conversations we're already having, we have people already working on the very same things.
Maybe you should speak to that.
So, what buildings have we looked at? What built, so, I know up on Hingham Street, there's buildings up for lease.
Holy Family's not an option, correct?
So, first of all, we've had extensive, extensive conversations with Holy Family, and, oh, again, that building's not going to be available. But in terms of our commercial space up on Hingham Street, the, the school department, and I also believe the Chipmunks program, because it's an early childhood, our program, oh, also affiliated with the school department, they have regulations that they have to deal with also from, that come from the Department of Early Education and Care, which defines space and everything else. So, I understand, and frankly, I don't disagree with you, like, on looking, like, everywhere. Like, I think that's what we have to do and what we're planning on doing. That's why we've already asked about the, our former Tedeschi's building, that's why we've already, like, had tours and have had our extensive conversations with Holy Family. Oh, so, we're looking at those type of things, Mike, and, like, and I also understand the thresholds, I'm in terms of our triggering, like, our ADA compliance and issues with the, our codes and everything else. That's why, like, I even think I'm rushing to judgment a little bit, like, when I talk about, like, anything, until once we know what the engineering actually comes back with. That's going to provide us, like, a lot of information, whether the, oh, the structure, like, of the existing community center, or could even, like, withhold an exposed system, and that will also undoubtedly deal with, oh, the thresholds that doing those repairs to the building will trigger. Oh, and, and so, we have a plan for all this. Frankly, the fire chief and the facilities manager from the school department, they were on the, they were on the phone with folks, like, at the end of the meeting, who will hopefully be able to come out, like, in relatively short order to, you know, to begin working with us on those things. But my only point is, as we continue the work, our, that you're talking about, like, if we could have just really a placeholder, so we don't get to June 1st, or June 15th, or July 1, and have all this information in front of us, and potentially, we don't have any idea one way or another, which, like, whether we can identify a commercial space that we can build out or retrofit it or anything else. But at that point, once we have the full picture in front of us, once we have the economic development plan for mass development in front of us and are able to consider us a board, at that point, oh, you know, if we, at that time, I'll find out that we have no other options, at least we have one other consideration. That is all I'm asking, I'm not saying we're going to, I'll get this, I'll approve by town meeting on May 19... meeting on May 6, I can go out to bond on May 8. I'm not saying that at all, but once we have all the information in front of us, sometime over the summer, yes, there's a timeline of when, you know, and how the work can be done, I understand that. But at the very least, you know, we have an option, so we're not potentially beginning that work, like putting all that, the whole project out to bid in the late fall, which is when, oh, we would if we went to the fall. So, because as I mentioned, I just fear that if we can't come up with a real plan in the next seven weeks, I just, I worry a lot, and I worry about the employees, frankly, that we have in that building. And I just wanna make sure as a town, that we're looking at all options here, and this is just one of, a whole bunch of options that I know we're gonna be looking at in the next few weeks.
Jim, we have town meeting in, what, 20 days? So I don't think we're gonna solve anything tonight, I don't think we're gonna be in a position to vote on anything tonight. So I think my suggestion, this will be an amendment on the floor, I believe, at town meeting. So I think my suggestion would be that, over the next 20 days, Mr. Mullen and Mr. Penny, you guys work closely together and come up with a plan to present to us at town meeting, or prior to town meeting, so that we can have a solid amendment to present to the town. And in the meantime, as well, if it means relocation of programs, that you guys work together to come up with a plan on that, along with Gene Blaney and whatever relative parties that you've been working with.
Absolutely.
And yes, absolutely, Mr. Chairman, but I'm just wondering, what would be the harm in amending?
My only concern, Mike, is Chairman Ryan is not here, and I believe Chairman Ryan should have some say in any decision that we make, any vote. I'd offer him the respect to include him in this discussion, and have him weigh in on it before we put out the vote.
So part of the other thing is, we have to have a feasibility study as part of that, and that's not on there.
You guys both, you guys both made.
So we have to do that before we do anything.
You guys both made great points, and I think I have full confidence in both of you guys to come up with some kind of agreement, some kind of terms that'll be best for the town. You know, John, as far as, from a legal standpoint, are we legally bound to carry through with bonding if it's authorized at town meeting?
No.
No.
So there's no legal.
It's both authorized and they're selected.
That's been, and you know, that to my point.
In that, Mike, I'm not against it, I'm not against it, but.
Has been my point. This would, and frankly, I mean, I think, like, I understand you wanna Mr. Ryan hear it, and I understand that, but I just think, just taking a step to make sure we have this option, and that it might be printed, takes a lot of, frankly, guesswork, or like, it's one, it's one small piece, we're a family, and I don't even wanna say this, because I hate thinking about this, but if we, like, if we go into a town meeting so open-ended as a board, there are families out there deciding, right now, where their kids are going to chipmunks, or whether they're gonna go somewhere else. And those decisions are happening now, so the longer we try to punt this out, that's what I mean about these programs suffering, because now it's very public that we're dealing with this issue, and people are gonna make considerations based on that. So if that's, you know, if that's the way we want to go, frankly, if that's how we're just gonna punt it out, and people will be hoping and praying, we go to town meeting with some type of, I don't even say compromise, because this really wouldn't commit us to anything, then I guess that's what we'll do.
But Mike, this doesn't solve the problem of the building closing June 13.
It does not, but it's an option, Rich, so we're not.
Mike, hold on, can you let me? I haven't interrupted you once, so please do me the same favor, okay? We're looking at this, the immediate need is what do we do with the programs in there? So even if the building were to get fixed, we're still gonna have months that we have to find temporary housing for programs, from, oh, let me finish, from not only the youth commission, but the chipmunks, to daycare, to historical commissions in there, the veterans' office, WIC, help me out, what else? Teen Center.
Yeah.
All right. So I am not opposed to fixing this building. What I'm opposed to is putting good money into something that is not the solution, and we need to find what the solution is. But, in the short term, we have a small window to be creative as a group to find homes for all these programs. That should be on the forefront of this whole thing.
And it is.
Right? So that's where I wanna put my energies. Where do we find it? Because even if we were to pass this, the building's gonna close, we still have to find a home. So let's find a home.
And there is, that work is ongoing, you talk about.
Mr. Mullen, please, I have not interrupted you once.
But you're talking about that work like it isn't happening, Rich, it is. It really and truly is.
So you've told me about two buildings.
I told you about two buildings, there's.
There's a lot more in town.
There's gonna be, no kidding.
Okay.
And at the same time, Rich, other staff.
So Mike, hold on, let me finish.
And the department heads are already working to figure out what the hopefully interim plans will be, but frankly, there is a hope, and using a whole bunch of connections that people in this town have, there was a hope originally, that we might be able to draw on some resources to be able to do a lot of this work over the summer, while the, while the programs were elsewhere, and then, maybe not at the beginning of the school year, but maybe shortly thereafter, those programs could go back. Again, I understand the timeline, I understand that many people would think the timeline will be unrealistic, but there's a lot of people in this town who have connections with a lot of good and resourceful groups, that frankly, I don't even wanna make public, but those are the conversations happening, which is, oh, you know, why I don't wanna, oh, you know, tell the whole free world about everything that's being explored right now.
So can I speak?
Sure.
So I haven't interrupted you once.
Okay, go ahead.
So I ask you not to interrupt.
All right, go ahead, thanks, Dad.
You keep interrupting, you keep talking.
Okay, all right. Go ahead.
All right, guys.
So, again, you are asking us, you are asking me, on the behalf of our townspeople, to approve or recommend an article that we truly have no information on, none at all. I can't do that. Until we have the information. So in the short term, we need to put all of our energies, put all the things aside, and find a home for all these programs. Because the reality is, if we were to design a community center, it would not be a three-story building and a 100-year-old building.
I don't understand how we have money to design.
So again, you need to interrupt me, it's unbelievable.
Go ahead.
Nope, I'm all done.
Ideal world.
I'm all done. Come up with some more solutions.
We will keep working.
Why don't we just be respectful towards each other? I know as a town, we're trying to move forward through some tough hurdles over the past year, but I think the board of selectmen could just respect one another and their opinions and.
Ms. Nyman, I agree, I did not interrupt him once.
Okay, guys. So with that being said.
Thank you both for your work on this issue, keeping us up to date on this. I wish there was an easy solution, seems like there's gonna be a lot of work that's gonna have to go into this, but I also don't wanna have to see these programs and children and employees without this great program, so.
So with that being said, we have 20 days until town meeting. I encourage both of you guys to work together, try to find homes for these programs. I'll touch base with Chairman Ryan tomorrow, it might end up being that we add a meeting at some point. It may not be necessarily printed, Mike, but it might be an amendment that, an insert that goes to it, if it comes to, you know, if Chairman Ryan decides if he wants to put a vote in on it. I mean, that's, I think, the best we're gonna come up with tonight. And with that being said, I think I'd like to move on. So, on to the next item on the agenda, which is Town Administrator's Report. Mr. Purcell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Two items to discuss your long-developing energy, community energy aggregation program. As I reported to you at the last meeting, bid day was on April 11. Chairman Ryan and myself and representative, a representative from Good Energy, had a one-hour window for parties to submit bids. The expectation was that there would be at least two, possibly three. In the Good Energy representative guessed right, there were two. One of which came in slightly above your current National Grid default figure on supply, which isn't always fatal to these things. But the other one came in below the default rate. The length of time that, well, I'll just say that, so we had one hour after the bids were submitted to lock in. I mean, that energy market, you know, goes minute by minute, you know, never mind hour by hour. So the choice was to, you know, to walk away or to lock in, and it's a, it would represent a small savings over this May to October rate-setting period that we're in, that the State Department of Public Utilities or Telecommunications and Energy, I should say, sets. So the, you know, the program is in effect, you're looking at a sample press release that Chairman Ryan thought that the board should see before it gets authorized, because a big public outreach process commences after that, and I know you know the details of that. But interestingly, I did hear earlier in the meeting about publishing tax material in Portuguese, and we have told Good Energy, even though their numbers say only 2% of the town's population is Brazilian, we're hearing that that number may be significantly more, and the census hasn't caught up with it. So that is an option that is going to be exercised. So I guess.
Do you want me to read?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Okay, so this is the press release, immediate release, National Grid Residential Basic Service Rate starting May 1st is .10820 per kilowatt. Rockland Community Choice Aggregation Program is .10742 per kilowatt. Rockland, Mass., April 17, 2019. The town of Rockland residents voted at town meeting to develop and implement a community choice electricity aggregation program. The aggregation plan was developed by Good Energy LP with the assistance of Rockland municipal officials in order to give residents and businesses more stable electricity rates for longer periods of time, offer more renewable energy options, along with the probability of lower electricity rates for the term of the electricity supply agreement, although savings cannot be guaranteed. On March 19, 2019, National Grid announced a residential basic service rate of 0.10820 per kilowatt per hour for a period, May 1, 2019 to October 31, 2019. The community choice aggregation rate for the same period is 0.10742 per kilowatt hour. All Rockland residential accounts on National Grid basic service will automatically be enrolled in the program as of a July 2019 meter read. A letter detailing the program is sent by Denergy, the competitive supplier, on behalf of the town, will arrive on or about April 29, 2019. The letter will provide program details and instructions on how to opt out of the program should the recipient not wish to participate. Account holders who wish to enroll in the community choice electricity aggregation program that did not receive a letter should call Denergy's customer service Monday to Friday, 9:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Eastern Time, excluding holidays, at 866-220-5696. The town worked with the Metropolitan Area Planning Council, or MAPC, and Good Energy to develop a green municipal aggregation plan. Residents will be enrolled automatically in the standard product, which contains 5% more local renewable energy than required by the Commonwealth. The premium product that has 100% local renewable energy, or the basic product that has no additional renewable energy. The aggregation will be implemented on the July meter read date and seen on the August electric bill. Any Rockland resident who wishes to leave the community choice electricity aggregation program is advised to contact Denergy directly. Participants may leave the program at any time and for any reason with no associated termination fees or penalties. For more information about the program, go to www.rockland-cea.com, or call 844-243-8424. Anything else?
Questions, questions come up, and, you know, the most frequent one is about the opt-out, why should I have to, why should I have to opt-out? The companies I experienced with this suggests a number of things. When you include all of the households in the town in your bid process, they know that there'll be a loss of about 20% or so on the opt-out. So the bidding companies can measure, you know, what the take will probably be on that. And the question will be asked of you, and it'll be asked everywhere, you know, why do I have to opt-out? Why shouldn't I just, I have to opt-in? Well, you'd never have a stable target to bid on otherwise, so the opt-out, I've experienced it, you know, myself personally, in my own town, with my own energy bills. And significantly, anytime anyone gets a call at the town hall, or a visitation at the town hall, or anyplace else, it's vital, and we will so advise department heads of this, that we refer them politely to the Good Energy folks, you know, for them to manage those particular inquiries. So you may be getting some questions, this is a modest savings in this particular rate-setting period, but the savings really grow when you get into winter. I went to fuel supplies and things like that, so I'll.
You're not gonna be part of this, it's only for National Grid customers. If you've already opted out to an independent supplier, you're not part of this, correct?
My understanding is you'd still have to sign the opt-out.
You would, okay.
On the Good Energy plan. Just for the audiences' consumption here, the term default rate is the rate that appears, if you're a homeowner, without a separate supply contract with any kind of an energy supplier, National Grid provides one for you, you know, they choose a provider for you, and the rate that's listed there is the so-called default rate. They're subject to, you know, there's a rate-setting process in Massachusetts, takes place a couple times a year, so there are, you know, there are caps and things that they have to work with. If you have your own separate energy supply contract, it may be better or worse than, you know, than what the default rate is. So in the release, when you see National Grid basic residential rate, again, that's for the period of May 1 through October 31 of this year. Your contract is longer than that, you'll get into, you know, you'll get into some better savings. Did I answer your question? I hope I did.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Thank you. My other item, Mr. Chairman, is you see an announcement from the Mass School Building Authority relative to the Town of Rockland-Jefferson Elementary School Project, reporting that the MSBA has approved the Town of Rockland as part of its invitation for a feasibility study to proceed into schematic design to replace the existing Jefferson Elementary School in the existing Memorial Park Elementary School. So you've advanced in the planning processes with the MSBA.
Do you want me to talk on that a little bit? I'm the chairman of the committee, so.
Love to. Bye, mates. I'd love to.
So last Wednesday, we were, we were at MSBA in Boston, along with, I know, it was about 19 other schools in different, different segments of the process. So we have been working with the MSBA on a couple of different plans. The preferred plan was to build a single elementary school to replace the Memorial Park School, the Jefferson School, and move the grades 1 through 4 at Esten all into one school. So it would sit at what is now what we consider the Oval. It would, it would house all grades 1 through 4, so we would have one, one real complex from grades 1 through 12 in the area. Esten would become an early education center that would be kindergarten and pre-K, and MSBA graciously agreed. So this is the second time that they have kind of followed our lead and thought outside the box. The first time was the combined high school and middle school, which then they have followed quite often. And this time, I think we're kind of leading the pack on this one is on a combined elementary school, so. There'll be information coming out. We, we will start the design, and over the next few months, there will be information as far as the scope of the project, what it looks like, the costs, and all those things. All right?
Okay, so Rockland's comments. Comments and opinions expressed by individual members do not necessarily reflect the views of the Board of Selectmen, and the opinions and comments of only the individual member.
Chairman, may I, I-
Yep.
Apologize for, for interrupting. I, I wonder if we could do one more item under the TA report.
Yep.
I'd like to yield to Jen Constable, the Assistant Town Administrator. She's been getting her arms around the Estes Project and, and has a report that is in Section 12 of your books. There is a certain timeliness question that, that we'll be addressing as well, so, thank you.
Thank you. So a quick update on 225 Water Street, or the site also known as Estes Auto Parts Building, which has been a building or a site that's been undergoing environmental cleanup for a number of years now. Most recently, it underwent a site assessment, which was completed, and that work was funded by Mass. Development Brownfields Grant. At the conclusion of that work, the site's been brought to what's referred to as regulatory endpoint to achieve a temporary solution. The next step in the process would be demolition of the vacant building on the site. And we, the town did go out to bid successfully for that demolition work back in February, and awarded to the low bidder, Francesco Demolition, in the amount of $61,748. There was a slight delay in processing that, excuse me, the contract was extended to Francesco Demolition due to unforeseen circumstances on the contractors', and there was a slight delay in returning the, the contract. The contract has been returned to us and is pending review by Town Council. At this time, so that the town could expeditiously move forward at completion of that review, I would ask the board to authorize the Town Administrator to execute the contract upon completion of review by Town Council.
I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion.
You got a first?
Second.
My second. All those in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Okay, Selectmen's comments.
It'd be nice to get that done.
Comments and opinions expressed by individual members do not necessarily reflect the views of the Board of Selectmen, and the opinions and comments of only the individual member. Mr. Penny.
Thank you, Mr. O'Laughlin. I want to first say thank you to everyone who came out on Saturday to vote. I know there was not a contested race, and we found out there were only 549 voters, which was a little discouraging after the, the November election that we had, I don't know, 7,200 voters. And I get that there were more things to decide, but at the end of the day, it is our town, so, you know, I hope in the future, even if there isn't a contested race, that people come out and support, and it would be even nice if we had some contested races, that some people actually wanted to some of these positions. Second is, nothing personal. I try not to get emotional. I look, I try to look at things very, very analytical, very black and white. For anyone who knows me, I have a history in this town with the youth going back 15 years, being very involved, involved in the schools, grew up in the town. There's no one who wants to see these programs abolished. My kids went to Chipmunks, so that's not what it's about. It's about what is the best solution for the town and the taxpayers, and trying to look at things objectively, and finding solutions that make sense. And that's, that's it for my part. Nothing more, nothing less. That's how I'll continue to operate, so, thank you.
Ms. Nyman.
I just want to congratulate everyone who ran the Boston Marathon yesterday. I know Chief Llewellyn and Susie Llewellyn ran it, so congratulations to them. Also, I got another concern. A member of the Board of Selectmen in a neighboring town had reached out to me a few weeks ago. He was in one of the new businesses that have come to town, and one of our town employees was in there being very disrespectful to the new business owners. So, one, I think it's an embarrassment that a neighboring selectman had to call me about this issue, because he was there to witness this. I just want to remind employees of the town to just kind of respect the new businesses that are coming to town, you know? They chose to come to Rockland, they didn't have to, and quite frankly, I think they're regretting it a little bit after the way they were treated. I'll follow up with you on this issue as well. I would just hope it gets rectified as soon as possible. I won't give out any names or anything, but I was just a little disappointed. So after I got the phone call, I went to this business and just said, you know, it could have been a bad day on his end, you know? I'm not saying that's acceptable, and I apologize for what had happened, and hopefully I will rectify the situation going forward. But I just wanted to remind, you know, committees, employees, and residents, just be respectful to one another and work together.
I'll find out what happened and then act accordingly.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Mullen.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. At our, last week's meeting, at the end of the meeting, there was some misinformation I will share that I, I, that I shared, and, like, regarding, like, a recent decision by the zoning board, like, relating to the proposed Wendy's up on Hingham Street, and I was completely in error when I shared the information that I shared, and, and me bringing the issue up led to a, a relatively protracted, our conversation that, that touched on a whole bunch of things, and our, so, to the Chairman of the Zoning Board, to the Zoning Board, our members, I just want to apologize for sharing information that frankly wasn't all accurate in any way, shape, or form. We all, all talk about, oh, you know, we're moving forward in a town that's, that we are changing the way we, oh, we work with each other, we interact between different committees, and we have information before us, and on that issue, I was honestly out of the pot, calling the kettle black, and, and I, I admit to it, I apologize for it, and I look forward to continuing to work with the Zoning Board to, oh, you know, to address the issues before us and, and to continue moving forward. So I just want to leave on that note, and have a great night.
Okay. I don't have much. I just want to congratulate Selectmen Penny on his reelection, as well as Chairman Ryan. You know, Larry, I want to say it was, what, about a year and a half ago, Mike, where we weren't even sure if Larry was going to continue as a member of the Board of Selectmen. Everybody knows what Larry did during the course of the summer to help us out, and I'm excited to have Larry back on board for another three years. With that said, that's why he couldn't be here. He ran such a rigorous campaign unopposed that he was mentally exhausted and he couldn't make it, so he asked me to stand in, and, Susan, I'm glad I did. So with that said, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I got a motion.
Second.
A second, all those in favor? Vote, call vote, Mr. Mullen.
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Mr. Penny?
Yes.
And myself. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.